Just like last year, we wanted to give you a quick highlight of our school budget, our proposed school budget, and offer an opportunity for questions and additional feedback. This really says it all. This is part of our pride, points of pride, our Section 3 championships, graduation, our marching band, our musical. This is why we do what we do, and this is why our budget is where it's at. It's to support our students. All of our decisions really center around our district's mission and vision, which was recently updated over the course of the prior school year. You'll see on our next slide all of our priorities for our strategic plan. We focused a lot this year on increasing school safety and security, as well as exemplifying cultural responsiveness, diversity, and equity. And then we're in the process of beginning a three- to four-year journey on the area of project-based learning experiences, and trying to create more internship and externship opportunities for students, and really bring to life the learning that our students are experiencing, consistent to what they would be expected out in the real world, in the field, college career, wherever they may choose to be. But all of these 10 priorities are part of our strategic plan, and they really drive all the decisions that we make. And our motto, "Build, Educate, and Empower," is really what this is all about. As far as our budget development process, this is a year-long process. It begins with the board adopting our budget in September, our budget calendar, and then we have virtual budget development committee meetings with members of our community. We advertise for those to be a part of that process. And then we have work sessions with our Board of Education to really come to our final product, which we have, at this point, the board adopted at our last meeting in March. And we are all set for moving forward with the public budget vote in the hearing come May. Highlighting again our student population, every decision that we make ties to that strategic plan, and it really is about the 5,490 students that make up our districts, both in all of our schools, and then also our 65 out-of-district student placements based on students' IEPs. We are required by law to present the budget using our three parts: the program component, the capital component, and the administrative component. The program component, as you see here, makes up $106 million worth of our overall budget. It's 78.65% of that budget. That is the most important part. It's what I like to say any impact on students is tied up in that program component. And as one would expect, you want that to be the largest component of the budget. That 78.65% is actually an increase over the percentage from the prior or the current school year. So we're happy to share that as well. To highlight a little bit more about our program budget, I do want to point out this: we're very proud of the fact, last year when we were here discussing an initiative that we had, it was to increase student participation in our fine and performing arts. And to do that, we utilized some additional revenue from our state aid this current school year to purchase instruments so that we could really expand our elementary music program. And so we're happy to say that, you know, in our first year, and we had a slow rollout because not all the instruments arrived when we wanted them to arrive for the start of the school, but we are happy to say that we have seen an increase in participation, specifically in orchestra at grade three. We're up to just under 70% of our students at that grade level are participating in our music program. That 16% change. In orchestra and band, we're up to 71%. And in fifth-grade orchestra and band, we're up to 65%. So we're proud of the fact that close to three-quarters of our students at the elementary level, grades three, four, and five, are engaged in the fine and performing arts. The administrative component of our budget, I will point out, this is actually 8.41% is actually a reduction from that percentage from the previous year. It covers all of our administrative costs associated with BOCs, Board of Education, superintendent business office, our human resources, anything that ties to the leadership of the organization, our dues, and again, not to, this is a reduction from where we were in the prior year. Capital component, we're happy to say that we think we have facilities that are matched to no other school district, and we keep maintenance in our facilities to the best of their ability. And we have been thankful for the community supporting our capital improvement projects. You'll note this year, the last two years, we have capital project votes that were tied to our school budget vote. We are not there this year, so we're seeing one less proposition, which we're going to be about, but we are still planning for what is next. We have ongoing conversations throughout the school year, and we anticipate a future building project coming to the voters at some point over the course of the next school year. And that's really to maintain our facilities and stay at the top of where we need to be, especially given all of the increased projections with students and enrollment tied to Micron and other high-tech manufacturing companies that are supposed to be visiting and residing in our region.
And just to point out, in all three parts of this, this includes all of our staff and all of their benefits. We break that out in each category. Sometimes that's a little confusing. So within capital is where all of our custodians, maintenance crew, grounds crew, that group of people are, in addition to taking care of our physical structure, anything to do with that.
Also tied to our capital is every year, we're allowed, based on law, to have what we call a capital outlet project. Cannot exceed $100,000. We do work in all of our schools. Next year, the work will fall at Palmer Elementary School, and we're looking at some steratrie replacements, bottle filler, water cooler updates. Again, what we'd like to point out here is that our state aid ratio with that $100,000 is 88.5%. So what that is essentially saying, we spend a dollar, we get 88 and a half cents back for every dollar spent. So it's well worth us doing these types of projects. All of our member organizations, New York State School Holdings, New York State Council, school superintendents, business officials, keep advocating with legislators to increase that to $250,000, because, as you know, doing work here in the Town of Lyssender, you can't really get a lot done for $100,000 anymore. So any advocacy on our communities and on that would be helpful. Our tax impact right now, it's important for our board and our district to go out at the tax levy. We feel that way because, you know, we can never make up any funding stream from our local sources if we don't go out at the tax cap. What I will point out, though, at that 3.89%, that is the proposed tax levy increase. What we know, based on the last many years, is that historically, even though we go out at that rate, the real impact on our taxpayers always ends up falling the actual tax rate, well below what is being projected. And a lot of that has to do with, as you know, working here and supporting the town with the adjustments to the property taxes or property assessments within the community. It was very helpful for us as a district last year when the Town of Lyssander, Town of Van Buren, and the Town of Clay chose not to reassess property. So it gave us a true picture of really what is the new growth in our school community. And if I remember correctly, it was somewhere close to $400 million last year. I'll let Kim find that. But that being said, I'm not sure where you are this year.
Yes, here.
Yeah, around four. Yeah. I'm not sure where you're at this year with assessments, if you're in the process of going through that in various areas of the community or not, but ultimately, what we'd like to highlight is the fact that while we can't control the assessments, we do try to put out a budget that ultimately is going to be supported by the taxpayers here. And we feel like the value that our community is getting for the product is certainly, is certainly high. Some driving revenue sources that we have here. So our overall budget is $135 million. You'll see an increase. I believe it was just over 4%. When you think about CPI this year, it was around 4.1%. So we have tried to keep our overall budget in alignment with where we believe things to be with rising costs due to expenses. You'll see a breakdown of where we have all of our appropriations for revenue sources. Pilots in lieu of taxes, a $2.8 billion. Other revenue sources, estimated state aid. What I'd like to point out here, this is based on the governor's runs, which we have not had a state budget adopted yet for the next fiscal year. So we anticipate, based on what we're hearing, that we could see some additional revenue sources for state aid, based on the legislative budget that ultimately the governor will hopefully approve. We see an increase here in building aid, based on the projects that we have on the books. We are appropriating just under $2.5 million in fund mail-ins, and then $1.9 million out of our reserves. And so overall, you see our total tax levy. The tax levy is set at, based on this budget, $65.7 million. So just about, probably about 55% of our overall budget is based on the tax levy.
So even if we do bring in more state aid this year, our overall budget number will not change. That is set. The board's adopted that, and we had started pushing out our legal notices. So our budget will be our budget, and if we have more state aid over the year, it will adjust itself in the future. And that's kind of how sometimes we try to fund balance with those opportunities when the state aid comes in a little bit higher, and then that allows us to fund the capital projects that we're working on.
So our first proposition that you see on the budget when you come to vote, it will be for the budget itself, which is listed there, just over $135 million. Our second proposition is for our traditional internal combustion engine school buses, our student transportation vehicles. We are strategic in saying that these are internal combustion engines, because there's a lot out there with alternate energy vehicles. And so we are trying something new this year, and we're sticking to our 14 student transport vehicles. There is where this is consistent to what we've typically done in the past. We have a fleet of well over 100 buses, and if we don't maintain our replacement plan, we're going to be in trouble. So what we'd like to highlight here is that our estimated local share is really, over the course of five years, just under $100,000 for $2.6 million worth of school buses. Our mechanics do a great job in maintaining DOT rates, and they do a great job maintaining our fleet. So that is for our traditional internal combustion engines. Proposition three will be new, and there's no pressure from our community. We're approaching it this year with the idea of knowing that the state has put out a mandate that we have to slowly start transitioning to zero emissions vehicles, which may not be the most efficient thing to do here in Central New York, but given the fact that that is out there and we have to comply at some point, hopefully that changes. Maybe it will, maybe it won't. We decided this year to put a separate proposition out to see where our community's at. You know, do they support zero emissions vehicles? And that could also provide us with data that we can then give to our legislature, our senators, our elected officials, to ultimately say to those that are making these decisions, is this really what's in the best interest of Central New York schools? And again, there's no pressure. We're hopeful that the community will support this, because it gives our mechanics an opportunity to work with this type of vehicle for a period of time before we have to, you know, go all in. But that being said, we also understand that if people have differing opinions on that, we just don't want this proposition to impact our overall bus proposition, because we need to make sure that we're maintaining our fleet. What I will point out here is that we have grants that are available. So Kim can talk a little bit more about this in general, but when you see the cost of a single zero emissions vehicle at being close to $600,000, that's like sticker shop, right? But with grants, we're able to bring that down, so the local estimated share is relatively reasonable when you think about it. We are specifically highlighting zero emissions and not just electric. We're strategic in that regard, because we don't know if it's hydrogen, or we don't know if it will be electric at this point. But those are the two types of zero emissions vehicles that are, that are out there that schools and other agencies are looking at. I don't know if you wanted to...
So I can just explain. So with the grant, part of the reason we went forward to is because typically, we may not qualify for the grants, and right now, a lot of people aren't applying for them. So we thought it was a good opportunity to apply and see what happens. And obviously, we did get the NISBA grant back already. The EPA grant will not be back until the middle of April, so we will continue to update this slide with the updated information. One of the things that the state has done that is confusing for people that when we get to the next slide, and hopefully it'll make it a little clearer, is our buses now, we pay for them over five years, and we generate aid back over five years. With the zero emissions, they thought it was a good idea, the state does, to go to 12 years. Well, if you see some of our buses, we have buses that are 10 years old, and in this area, they're not great in regards to the underneath of them, the panels. We're fortunate that we have a great facility, that we have somebody that maintains those vehicles. But right now, when they get to be 10 years old, and you're seeing that, we can get rid of them, and we're no longer getting aid or paying for them. With 12 years, it's a little different scenario in my mind. So with that being said, if we go to the next slide, one thing I wanted to make clear, because as Dr. DeBarbe mentioned, we're providing this information to our community to get input. So when you take a look at one of our large buses, 66 passenger buses that everybody sees on the road all the time, these are the costs right now. For the internal combustion engine, it's about $175,000. The zero emission is $575. So even after you apply your aid, and this is what we'll be dealing with when the grants are no longer available, this is the difference in regards to how it will impact the estimated local share over the life of that aid calculation that we have to deal with. So that's something that we feel is very clear to make the picture for our community, to educate them about the difference in that. Now, within the zero emission, of course, we have to buy chargers, we have to do those types of things too, which isn't included in here. So, you know, you're not taking into consideration the fuel necessarily to run the internal combustion engine. But just kind of looking at, here you go, this is what the upfront cost is to the district.
Because many of you know, we're fortunate that our facility is now in this industrial park, where other schools across the region, you know, they don't have the luxury with power and access to energy like we do here, based on where their facilities reside. Proposition four will be the Board of Education candidates. We have four seats that are presently being held by Tom Bold, Jeremy Calley, Don Miller, and Christine Pavetto. Those are seats that are up, and we'll be looking to see which candidates choose to run for the board for this election. We have a public hearing and meet-the-candidate night scheduled for Monday, May 13, at 6 o'clock in our transportation facility on West Century Road. This is also live streamed on our website through the Zoom platform. So those that can't make it, we encourage you to at least access the video either during the meeting or after. And I think that is it, unless there are specific questions that folks have.
I had a couple.
Sure.
Thank you for the wonderful presentation. It was a number, I just want to make sure I read you correctly, about the assessed value going up, even though the two towns have obviously capped assessments, you had a number of $400 million.
This was last year, when we did not...
Right. So one of the things that we had tried to figure out is exactly that. How much is new build and how much is reassessment, because that discussion was always ongoing up until last year. So when we talked about that, we're looking at the fact of the difference in the total property values between 22, 23, our school year, 2022, 23, I'm sorry, yeah.
22, 23, 24.
Yeah, in 23, 24. So the way it works, the way we have to do our tax levy is we, the cap is on the total levy. So once that levy is set, we push that over all of the property assessments. And that's why we're always coming out lower for our tax rate per thousand, because we have to project that right now over the current values that we have. We don't get the new assessed values until August from the county. So that's where we're looking at, that difference in that number without the two towns. Now, is that 100%, you know, like, specific? Probably not, because the equalization rate in this town in Van Buren was different, and obviously Clay is always different. So we're dealing with three different equalization rates as well when we're calculating the tax levy.
And where I was going with that comment was it helps us to understand, because we've always seen the reduction from what we're estimating to where we end up. And it was helpful for us, because we knew that there's, obviously, there's lots of new build, right? And there's new businesses coming into the, to the area. And so for us, it was always difficult to try and figure out. And so last year, when we were here, it just so happened to work out that with no reassessments, that gave us a true picture of what that growth is from year to year. Now, is that consistent every year? Probably not, but who knows moving forward?
So one of the things that we looked at is we always look at the tax rate per thousand, the true tax rate per thousand. And when we historically looked back, so last year for 23, 24, when we actually pushed out the tax warrant, that tax rate per thousand was 1861 per thousand. And obviously, you know, people's assessments go up, so that plays a part in this too. If we go back to 2017, 18, it was 2389 per thousand. So those are just some of the talking points that we've heard questions over the last few years. So we're just trying to provide a little bit more information.
Thank you on that. And I hope you're successful. I appreciate how fair you are in all of what you're saying, especially about the zero emission vehicles. But I hope the public can read between the lines in terms of what you're, I mean, you're not even taking into account batteries you're going to have to buy within the course of 10 years. I mean, I just, I just hope that how you ever, I don't know, how are you going to get it out there? I mean, I'm not trying to tell you how to do your business, but you've got a messenger here, and that's how it is.
Yeah, no, I mean, well, our public budget hearing, we're visiting as many places as we can. We will put, you know, information in our budget, news, to the community, so that they have as transparent as a way as possible to communicate here without telling people how to vote. Here's, here's the information's out there, because we can't do that. But it'll be interesting, because ultimately, things could play out too within the next couple of weeks before the state adopts the budget, where there could be changes. And we're hearing, you know, some rumors that that may be the case, and they might push off that mandate. But until that actually is in writing, we're stuck with having to plan. And I know there are other school districts that are kind of waiting and seeing, and we just feel like trying to be a little bit ahead of the game, and at least give more information to people and more data that can then help us, you know, ultimately move forward. Because is it realistic? I mean, personally, I have my own thoughts and ideas. I do think it's interesting to expect schools to, you know, have zero emissions vehicles when we don't expect the general public. And, you know, that just seems personally a little bit out of whack. That's my own belief. And knowing the charge and the cold weather, and how many miles our buses run each day, and, you know, the ability to charge a vehicle if it's electric, and the time that we need it to charge is just, it's not realistic. And that's me personally speaking.
Well, and the issue becomes, based on the size of our fleet, there's no way we can hit 2035 right now, even if we started to try to replace and build that in. So there's, and I've said this in meetings with, you know, the professional organizations when they bring in speakers, there's no way that we can have all of our fleet turned over by then, based on the fact that we have buses that are 10-plus years old in our fleet right now, which is back to the internal combustion, why we're asking for 14, because we're finding that you're either paying to maintain the bus, or you're paying for a new bus. So let's kind of try to get over to that point where we're paying for a new bus, and not continuing to maintain, and really finding that sweet spot to stay under 10 years for our replacement.
And what's frustrating for us, as educators, is that that's not our area of expertise, right? So we're spending all this time talking about zero emissions, and it's taking away from what we should be talking about, which is our students and their instruction, and what's most important for them. And, you know, that's, that's a point that our board and our leadership team have been pushing across the region with our elected officials.
There's just one more thing I would add regarding the internal combustion engines too, because you mentioned the fuel, the diesel fuel. But it's not just charging stations that we would need. Electricity's not free. I, you know, and I don't know how much it costs per run to run an internal combustion engine in one route compared to how much it would cost on a zero emission vehicle to do the same route, you know? And that cost, it's not there. It's kind of hidden, but sometimes. Well, you just plug it in. Not free.
Well, in all of the studies that have to be done, and that we have done in regards to, do you have enough power? You know, where would you put the charging stations? If you really start looking at all of that, we have a brand-new transportation facility with a huge parking lot in the back, and how are you going to get electricity to every single one of those buses that have to charge?
And if the power's out overnight, it's not like just pulling up a gas pump when the power comes back on. An hour, half hour behind. You know, a bus takes four hours to charge.
It'd make it easier for me when I have to call emergency closing, right? Because somebody else, somebody else is making that decision.
Power failure. Was there any other questions from the board? First, I want to ask, were you taking questions from the public, or would you?
Sure, I mean, whatever you come up with.
We do have a lot on the work session, Fred, so...
I got a lot to say too.
Well, you got a couple, you got four minutes.
I'm Fred Burge, Blingo Road. Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. A little insight, they know it all. I'm the youngest of 12 kids. I've lived in this town my entire life. All 12 kids went to that school district. My father graduated from Elizabeth Street. That was a high school back then. We got the first computer when I was a senior. We never had lights on the football field. We didn't have a YMCA light facility, swimming pool with lights outside. We didn't have any of that. But somehow, we made it. We didn't even have a town park. That being said, a few years ago, our previous supervisor made a big deal about getting the diesel and getting the noise from the school buses out of the village and put it over here. Now that we're going to be switching over to vehicles that don't have emissions and don't make noise, can we move it back to the school district so that we can sell that property and make some, get some tax revenue?
Well, ultimately, that's a great facility, and the facility that's over there now is not being utilized in that way. So it would not be cost-effective, in my opinion, from the district standpoint, to move our transportation facility from where it is right now.
Right.
And with that too, based on what Kim said, if this is put into effect, 2035, that's still a lot of time for there to be changes, and whether this mandate actually comes through, I don't know. But...
Takes an hour to fully charge a Tesla. That's three. What, how long's it going to take to charge a school bus? Last week, a Tesla started on fire on 481. It took three fire departments, four hours, to put out that one fire. A Tesla facility in Texas started on fire a few months ago, and they lost the whole facility, and it came from one bad battery. Are we parking buses in there?
We do not park, we have vehicles inside, they're outside.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And that is a concern, obviously, of many school districts. It's been brought up to our legislators, that, you know, that's an issue. You can't, in this type of climate, you want to keep your vehicles warm. You obviously can't keep your vehicles warm when they're electric, because they're, if they're inside a facility and the facility goes up, you lose your whole fleet. So those are all arguments that we are saying, we're advocating with people higher up than us that ultimately are making these decisions, and they change those decisions.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate what you said about you wish you didn't have to spend so much time with this, and spend more time with the kids, which is where you want to be. I'd like to say something about that. Central New York is roughly considered Rochester to Utica, Watertown to Binghamton. Why is it in the last 10 years, only one school in the Central New York area consistently ranked in the top 25 school districts in the state? And that's Fayetteville Manlius. Why can't Baldwinsville compete and get in the top 25? Why can't Baldwinville compete and get in the top 25 in central New York? I'd like to see the amount of money that we spend per student relatively compared to every other district in the area and see what we're getting in exchange for that. I'm embarrassed that Baldwinville spends the amount of money that we do. We got a beautiful campus there, but why can't we get kids scoring in the top 25?
So actually, I'd be happy, I don't have the slide here, but if you come to our public budget hearing, we can make sure that information's there. We are one of the districts in this region that is the lowest cost per pupil out of all this, the areas, area school districts. I mean, we're proud of that fact. So what we spend per student is significantly less than a lot of those other districts. And I will tell you that, you know, those rankings that you're referring to are all based on New York State assessments. And I think what we're doing is providing students a more well-rounded experience. It's not all about a test. It's about the experiences they're getting in order to be successful as they move on from our district. And I think those students that leave us, they have great experiences that are making them competitive, whether it's college, career, or the military.
I appreciate that. One last thing.
Fred, we got to move on to our agenda.
Thank you for your time, sir.
I apologize for this. You can go back and see them at their public hearing.
Yeah, right there, May 13.
Transportation Center, Sycamore.
At the Transportation Center, yes. And if you have other questions, you can send me an email. I'd be happy to respond. And anyone else for that matter.
And I think we appreciate the discussion. That's kind of part of the reason why we put up a proposition for a zero emission bus is just for this reason, because either way, no matter what happens, it provides us with data to help with those future discussions with the people making the decisions.
Yeah, well, you never know, as you get to zero emission and you have to, you might end up putting buses back where you moved them out of 10 years ago to be able to have the storage and the capacity to separate them in case of a fire or something. It's a lot to think about. I applaud you. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
That'll be up on your website.
It will absolutely be on our website as soon as we have that public hearing.